Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order, I guess.
Right.
I didn't expect any public, so. Yes, yes. Okay, is everybody ready? All right.
I'll grab one on my way. Thank you.
If we could have George leaders in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, if we could have a roll call.
Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Perrault.
Here.
Commissioner Lundby.
Here.
Commissioner Seibel. Commissioner Tafoya. Commissioner Furby.
Here. We have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and start. Does anybody need to discuss the agenda for the evening? Any discussion of change? Any? Any move to approve?
A move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, and has everyone here had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting? Are there any changes or corrections that anybody wants to go over?
I had one.
Okay.
On page three, under Zone Change 12-4. Just after the listed findings, it says Commissioner Seibel seconded the motion, so it doesn't have whatever the motion was.
Yeah, it's right above the four. It's above the four findings.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I did the same thing.
Okay. Oh, I see it, I see it. Okay, thank you.
Oh, wow, it did, yeah, okay. Doesn't stay out.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anybody move to approve?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, the minutes from last time are approved. Okay, and we don't have any old business, so we'll go.
I don't know if this qualifies as old business. I just had a comment on one of the requests that we heard at the last meeting. I don't know if anybody caught it, but I saw a portion of a special on PBS about people that climb the cell towers to install these additions to them and what dangerous work it is and how they're basically getting paid nothing to do it and, you know, there's been a lot of injuries and even at least one death that I saw. I didn't watch the whole thing, but I know it's probably outside of our realm of, you know, business, but it would be interesting to know how these things are being installed here and what process there is and who does it and I don't know, I don't know if it's of our concern or not, and I know that this one, as Nick, I think, pointed out, is either at capacity or almost at capacity anyway, but.
What we approve is the third set, and it's built for four.
For, right. But it was interesting, yeah, they're, you know, just people with little experience are, you know, climbing up there and basically unprotected and I guess it's been a problem. I mean, big enough to have a special on it, but it would be interesting to see or to hear how the ones that are being installed on ours here are being done. And I don't know if this is a different type than the one that was on there, you know, like I said, I didn't even catch the whole thing, but it kind of, it was right after that meeting, I thought, wow, you know, I wonder if we approved this thing and, you know, we didn't even take into account who was doing it and whether they were safe in doing so, or I guess we don't have a lot of control on how well they're compensated, but it was interesting, something to think about or look into, anyway. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Yes, yes. Oh, thank you. I had it on there, but I have it too far down. Um, yes, I'd like to introduce Leader Furby. Thank you for joining us and welcome, our newest member, and so we are very, very, very glad to have you here, and I think we may have a couple more applicants, so there's a possibility that we will be full, hopefully. However, anybody listening out there, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't put in your application, because I know they're still in consideration and we would love to have as many possible applicants as possible out there to look at, so. Okay, so next then is public hearing ZC 1205, and it's a zone change request for numerous tracts of land in Silver City, and the applicant is the town of Silver. And this commission will serve as a hearing board, and I, as chairperson, will be the presiding officer. This case involves an application for zone change requests. Have any members of the hearing board had ex parte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communications from any party to this case?
I don't know that it really qualifies, but I did happen to be in Jim Coates' office in the community development department a few weeks ago, when a property owner in the affected area came in to ask some questions, and so I was there for that discussion.
Anybody else? Nothing, that doesn't seem to much of a concern at all. Okay, any persons wishing to testify in this hearing must now come forward and be sworn in. Being sworn in does not obligate you to testify, but you'll not be allowed to speak in this hearing unless you've been sworn in. I think everybody who's getting sworn in knows the drill. Okay.
Mr. Allen, hi, state your name.
Hi, Peter Russell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Will be the truth, the whole truth.
Will be the truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
And nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
Okay. Okay, is the town ready to make their presentation?
Pardon?
You're making a presentation?
Yes. Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you. This is the, not the beginning nor the end of this massive zone changing process that we've promised for a year or so, but we're glad to finally reach this point, anyway. It is the, an application by the town of Silver City to rezone a number of parcels, most of which are described as lots within blocks within the Silver City, the original Silver City survey by Fraser. There are a few parcels that were not lots within blocks, and so we added them as parcel numbers from the tax rolls, and there is also, there are also a few lots within blocks of the Blacks Edition, which is next to the original Silver City Fraser survey. So, just some background, the town of Silver City encompasses quite a large bit of property and goes far south, far to the west, and out to the theater and up north, Al Swan, Little Walnut, through the Alabama Street neighborhood, and then out towards Boston Hill, down Ridge Road, parshway to the landfill, over to Mountain View. It's a large piece, and this is a map that we received oh, last August, a aerial view of the town. It's quite broad right now, but it's helped the town in its zoning and lots of applications in not only parcel acquisition, but the utilities have used it a lot, so it's been a good tool. This is the current zoning within the town of Silver City. The red is the commercial, blue is residential A, purple is industrial, green is open space, RA is the yellow, blue is residential B. So you can see a broad mix of various zones throughout the town. This is the area that we're focusing on this evening. Let's see, here's Bullard Street, up to, let's see, College Street, I wish my eyes were better, 10th Street here, out to, let's see, E Street, and then this is the line of the original Silver City, or the original Fraser survey goes up, it's a square like that. This is the Chihuahua Hill area downtown, over near the university, and then the old mill sites down along San Jacinto Creek, south of town. This would be the Brewer Hill area, so we're, but where we're focusing on is 10th Street, south to Chihuahua, east of E Street, and over to Main Street or the Big Ditch, however you want it. This would be Main Street through this area. So I want to go back just a little bit. You can see that within this commercial area, you, as a commission and the council, have seen fit to make some spot zoning changes. Several of these are with, since the Land Use Code of 2010 was passed or adopted, and they represent the commercial historic district spot zoning that we've done. This piece of RB was rezoned years ago. I think this piece of R1 or RA was rezoned, I think, 2007, somewhere in there. These, but both of these were done because they were in the commercial and wanted to be residential, so. These wanted to be residential or have multi-use anyway, or a mixed use, a residential or a commercial, but they were actual residential uses that couldn't get their financing together because of the commercial zoning in that area. We are requesting the change for a number of reasons, not the least of which is the commission would like to see it done, the council would like to see it done, but prior to the Land Use Code or Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, only one commercial zoning category existed, and during the process of developing the Land Use and Zoning Code or revising it, people understood that there needed to be some flexibility, some ability to have multi-uses in the commercial area. So an historic downtown commercial category was created specifically for those areas in the historic districts, those state-approved districts which are historic in nature, and that's not a zoning category, it is a, just a, an age, quality category, and it's an overlay to all of the other zonings that we have. But the historic downtown commercial category was created specifically for those historic districts by the Land Use Code. It incorporate, and another reason is to incorporate the historic downtown commercial district into the official zoning map, which we've been doing in a spot zone basis with one here, one there, and we want to incorporate that category of historic downtown commercial into the map as official so that all the landowners can take advantage of the benefits that are part of having the commercial or the residential uses. It will more closely reflect the actual property uses because it will allow both commercial and residential uses within that area, and it will resolve problems for non-conforming properties. Many of the properties within the historic districts are residential, and if they are in the commercial area right now, that they are just by definition non-conforming, so we're hoping to change that, and we want to decrease the need for spot zoning in the area. The proposed area that we are bringing forth is the part of the commercial districts that is already zoned commercial. The area goes from 10th Street over to the west side of the Big Ditch or the west side of Old Main Street, or, excuse me, the east side down, and incorporates a little bit of area here which has been zoned industrial, but it was just recently in April designated by the state as being a part of the Silver City Historic District. We thought, since that's happened and the uses in that little bit of area there are all within the uses of the commercial, or downtown historic commercial, we thought we might as well change that little bit of industrial to commercial. And then we followed the line down Bullard, down the Chihuahua Street, back up, heading through people's backyards or between lot lines rather than following street lines, across between Spring and Bremen, following the old survey line up. This little piece here was commercial before, and that's part of the Blacks subdivision. We want to do that, we want to come across, and mind you, we're still retaining the commercial district change rather than trying to rezone residential right now. We want to make sure that we at least get that, the specified use of the commercial or the historic downtown commercial zone was for commercial area in the historic district, so we're trying to take care of that area first. One of the issues that we have heard in the public meetings we've heard, we've held, or the one public meeting we held, and a lot of comments we've heard from people who have received letters about the change have been, well, what about me? I have a piece of property, let's see, I think this is it, right here, there's a piece of property here that you're changing to historic downtown commercial, because it was commercial, but I also own this little piece of blue here, what about me? Can't we change mine to historic downtown commercial, too? And we're saying, we'd like to get the big change of just the commercial done first, and we're asking people to hold off, so this is done and then come to us on the edges so that we can work with neighbors along, say, this peninsula of residential B. If most of the neighbors want to change that, that would be fine, it's just we wanted to take care of the commercial areas first. Just have that part done and then work with people and property owners in the smaller areas. Same with something like this, we'd like to change this eventually as well, and if neighbors, some neighbors up here are talking about, they'd like to have a multi-use zone up here because there's some commercial properties now and it's zoned residential, what can they do? And we're working with them. So we just, we're looking at the baseline right now as, let's get something broad stroke done and then start working the edges on a case-by-case basis or a block-by-block basis of people who want to come to us and make those changes. That's why we've stuck with the commercial zone right now for requesting the change. And, you know, you've heard this spiel lots of times about the historic downtown commercial district is intended to accommodate a mix of commercial uses, serving residents and visitors, mixed-use buildings and residential buildings in the historic central business core, which I think is an important issue, that historic central business core, from the historic standpoint and also what's available now, and to provide a variety of building sizes compatible with the character of the Silver City Historic District. The district encourages a high level of vitality through diverse activities conveniently accessible to pedestrians, and we want to make sure that that conveniently accessible to pedestrians percolates up into the actual uses and any changes that might occur within that district. I've included this map for several reasons. I wanted to show you, it's kind of an overlay between the existing commercial district, which is the red. The dotted lines are the, this is the North Edition Historic District, this is the Blacks Edition Historic District, the Chihuahua Hill Edition Historic District, and the large one, the Silver City Historic District. This little jag right here is what was added in April to the Silver City Historic District, and that was, it took quite a while to make that happen, and it added, let's see, one block of Bullard Street that was commercial, and that would, that block included the apartment across from Polisco's and the tile factory, and then it included this little bit of industrial zoning that is property owned predominantly by the owners of home furniture, and then right behind it is the old skating rink owned by Mr. Parrish. So that, we wanted to just bring in, since it was newly added to the historic district, bring it in and turn it into commercial rather than industrial, because most of the uses, all the uses in that, that little bit is industrial. Across the street down here, we still have an industrial manufacturer, the Custom Steelworks, the Stuart Eggnall's business, and he's the bridge builder in town, so we're real fortunate that he's there, but it is basically an industrial use still, and that's a good place for it. It's an interesting business, but it's not in the historic district, and we didn't feel like we needed to add that into our commercial area, so. Any questions so far, or interrupt at any time, I'm getting dry, so.
And the property owners within that industrial zone didn't have any issue with going?
Actually, the property owners in that little piece right there, at least the Kennedy? The Kennedy family came to the gathering that we had at the Silco, the open house about it, and they are the ones that brought it to our attention that, why aren't we part of it, too? And we looked at it real close and thought.
Yeah.
And they've been receiving the notices, and we've not had any comments, negative or otherwise, about adding that little bit, because when we first held the open house, we weren't including that. It was after we talked with them and they were open to it, we thought that would be a good idea, so. We learned something at that meeting. The benefits to the property owners, provides more flexibility in use, it allows residential, residential finance and insurance rates for residentially-used properties, which are much lower than the commercial rates, and that has become an issue since the mortgage industry has changed, they're being a lot stickier about what they will finance since the mortgage, the mortgage rate, the whole trouble with the mortgage industry. And replacement enlargement of structures that facilitated and structures is a conforming use, that's, right now, if a non-conforming building were to burn to the ground, they could rebuild it as the non-conforming use, but they could only expand it by 25%, and there's timeframe limitations as to how soon they would have to build it, and so we want, this will allow them to build it to a different conforming use, where there'll be a conforming use, they can build it anyway within the building codes, we'd allow, so that's another benefit of having the change. As we've talked about, or I've mentioned, the boundaries are basically the same as the commercial district boundaries now within the historic district overlays, except for that industrial zone property recently added to the historic district. As proposed, the historic downtown commercial district does not extend into residential A or residential B zones. We're keeping those boundaries tight right now. Following adoption of proposed historic downtown commercial district, boundaries may be adjusted as requested by town and/or individual collaborating property owners. So we've, anybody that's asked, that's what we've told them, come talk to us, we'd be more than willing to listen. This is a map of the proposed area showing the actual parcels. That's how we needed to describe the area based on blocks, and if they were half blocks, we'd describe the north half of this such-and-such block. And as you can see, this area down here doesn't have nice neat little blocks, like, or nice, or lots, they're just, and that was, according to the county, that's called the unsubdivided portion of the Fraser survey of the original town site. So it was harder, it was harder to describe, so we tried to show dimensions, but we also specified those parcel numbers from the county to determine which ones are the damn. This long stretch here that doesn't have any lots or blocks, that's Main Street, which is a right-of-way to the town, and it also describes Big Ditch. The town also owns this little piece, wraps around, this is owned by the owners of the apartments, this is owned by the town, and this is the Big Ditch coming down through here, the town owns this property. And then you have, most of this property here is owned by the Kennedys, the home furniture, this is the skating rink, and this little section here, this sliver that we wanted to protect along the edge of the Big Ditch is actually owned by DeRero still, so. This is an overview, or a close-up of that little bit of area. I'm focusing on that because it is an anomaly in our proposal, that it's not commercial area. This was commercial, this is not, so we wanted to, this was industrial here, we wanted to add it in because of the addition to the historic district. The historic district doesn't deal with the zones, it just deals with the buildings and the structures, whether they're historically significant or not. So just another overview, but with an aerial, showing all the different buildings within the proposal, proposed area. And then we've had one proposal that is an alternative to what we came up with, and we received this after the first, or after the open house that we held at the Silco, and Mr. McKinney spoke to some extent at that meeting about how he would like to see a different configuration rather than having just commercial historic district, or the historic commercial, historic downtown commercial district wrapping into the existing commercial. He wanted to throw some mixed-use zones in and around, change this tail down here from commercial to residential A. In looking at this proposal, you know, we appreciated his enthusiasm and concerns, we're not sure that, well, for several things, we're not wanting to go into residential areas yet with the change, and this does this, it also cuts back some of the commercial area. We figured that it's about, oh, a third less in size of the commercial, or of the historic downtown commercial area that we're proposing. He's been using a lot of the mixed-use area around it, and looking at the differences between mixed-use and historic downtown commercial, it's, I'm not sure exactly what benefit he saw to gain, there are some areas, one that he mentioned at the meeting was commercial, or the historic downtown commercial allows apartments greater than 10 units, and than 10 units, and multi-use it would have to be, or mixed-use it would have to be a conditional use. So, there are little, little things like that. Mixed-use wouldn't allow alcohol sales. The commercial historic, or the historic downtown commercial does allow that, and we do have that in the Bullard Street area. So, yes, Leah?
You said that he proposes adding some of what is now residential, but can you point out there where that is?
Well, this strip is that little peninsula-
Oh, okay.
-which is now residential B. This strip right here is residential A.
So, that's just sort of half of that?
Right. This, this is part of the commercial that we're proposing.
Okay.
Let's see. This would be, this is residential here, this is changing to residential. This piece here, and I think last year in March, was changed to commercial historic, or downtown historic district by the landowner, this little piece here, because he wanted the flexibility of commercial or residential. So, those are the major changes from-
Where he adds in residential. Okay, thanks.
Sure. Any other questions on this proposal? I wanted to make sure that Mr. McKinney's proposal did reach you, because he addressed it to the commission and the council, and the council will also have an opportunity to review it as well.
It does seem like he made some points about the old jail in his letter and that property up there. You know, he also talks about the South Bullard, you know, the, the historical park proposal on South Bullard. Now, I understand that's more complicated because of the current uses, but I do wonder about, like, the old jail property. And I know we just decided to be cut and dried about this whole thing, but I don't know. I mean, that seems like one blatantly obvious one.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, your hand raised here.
Oh, thanks. I'm sitting there reading what you're talking about. Yes, Peter.
Counselor Seibel, when you say the old jail, what do you mean?
Well, the Grand County Detention Center-
So, since it's a county property, building doesn't apply to it?
This is true, but supposing, not that it's likely that this happened, but supposing that they decide to sell it. I mean, it would be a nice site for something, although I hope it would be county offices of some sort.
But I mean, I'm not sure what your point is, that you think it should be something other than commercial historic?
Well, it's kind of sliced at the moment, right? I mean, like, half in and half out, something like that?
Yeah, so, that's the kind of situation that we talked about, that we could fix after the fact. What we're trying to do, because there's so many parcels in there, such a complicated project potentially, we wanted to address the problems of just having the commercial and not being able to refinance your house if you happen to live there, and to promote mixed-use, et cetera. Once we do the big commercial area, then we can go back in and say, oh, this splits your property, and you would like to see it as a unified use. We can do that, we'll bring that forward. On the other hand, it could be, oh, well, your property extends over to this other street. This other street has no commercial activities along it. We really need to think about whether you want to introduce a commercial activity onto that new street. So, that's why we use the property lines that run down the center of block, which is the way they were set up in the 60s. So, we're trying to keep it simple, but we are very open to the idea of then going back in and working on the edges for those property owners that, that have something now. But if we try to tailor it to every single property, we saw that in the application for the historic district rezoning on, what was it, Bremen Street. You know, you suddenly started seeing, gosh, this property goes in two lots, this one goes in six, this one, it just gets very, very complicated to tailor it. So, we would prefer to do the big zone change first, and then go back in and fix the edges.
It reminds me of a story, or the, the old idiom about how to eat an elephant, one bite at a time. And this, to me, is the first bite.
Yes.
And you have to, conceptually, you have to have some parameters on how much of that elephant you're going to put on your plate for the first serving.
This is a big bite.
Yeah.
Put it in just a bite.
Yeah, exactly. More to follow.
I have to say that I, I do think that Mr. McKinney does have some, some good points. I think some of them will come along when we address those residential areas, whether a mixed-use would be more appropriate for some of those residential areas. As far as the commercial, because we're going to a less intense zone, you know, from, most of these have already had a commercial zone, and we're going to, you know, mixed-use, I don't really see infringing into that commercial zone with mixed-use, but I think some of it may come up in, in the residential areas, and, you know, it will be something to, to think about. I don't necessarily agree with the southern part of Bullard, those, those changes he's proposing there, but he does have some good points in some of those outer areas, and the transition into the residential areas, maybe mixed-use may be more appropriate. But I think it was, it was nice of him to, to create this map, and it's very thought-provoking yet, so, but I, I like how it's presented for the most part.
As I read his letter, I said to myself, maybe this guy should be thinking about getting on the planning and zoning. I mean, he put a lot of, he put a lot of work into this, he really did.
Yeah. It was also kind of, I thought, a model letter in terms of attitude.
Yes, right.
Really.
It was very, it was-
Very positive, very supportive, but-
It was a constructive letter.
Still getting this detail freshened up.
He ended it by, you know, while I believe my ideas would improve on the current proposal, I understand the difficulty of changing his zoning proposal in midstream. The existing proposal, meaning what we're looking at here, is still a great improvement on the current situation. So, you're right, it's a, it's a good letter.
And along those lines, I commend staff for including it in full, you know, rather than catering it, you know, getting bits and pieces, and just presenting it as, as he did, and, you know, whether or not staff agrees with it, I, I appreciate you presenting it in full to us. It's, it's interesting.
And I think there is an interesting larger principle, like, we wanted to consider his proposed multiple-use areas, which is basically saying, you know, you have this large area that would be for both commercial and residential, and since some of it is, tends to be more residential, then do you want to, you know, limit it differently, rather than just recognizing that, yeah, this whole area is supposed to be both, and some might congregate, you know, more commercial in one area and residential in another within it. But then, do you want to start changing the zoning because of that, or just recognize, hey, this whole area is both?
Actually, in, in reviewing and thinking about Mr. McKinney's letter, and in my position, my day job, in, as Main Street manager, you know, we've recently sort of reworked our definition as an organization of what we consider to be downtown, to include the area of Pope Street and up around Golf Park, because, you know, with the new HMS building, which is being developed very much in a downtown model, and with a lot of frankly underdeveloped property in that corridor, it seems like a real opportunity to do some really nice sort of mixed-use development on that historic model. And so, I hope as we go forward and look at other properties that we might include, that would certainly be one that I'd like to see considered.
One of the, the difficulties of defining this was, how far north do you go? And because it was for the historic downtown commercial, we kind of cut it off at the historic district. But recognizing that this is definitely part of downtown these days, and how do, how do we finesse that to become even more part of the neighborhood?
We'll have to, we'll have to see if, whether historic commercial is only for the historic districts, right, and come up with whether or not that, that zoning is just a, you know, it has the same terminology, but it, you know, could be more expansive and not just in the, the actual designated historic districts.
And looking at the benefits to the property owners, most of the property on, along Pope now is commercial, and there's not that issue of people wanting to use it as residential. But it's certainly being pulled into the downtown core.
Well, in theories, in using the HMS building as an example, you know, there are some temporary, short-term growing units that are being developed as a part of, of that building, and certainly, you know, as folks build new buildings along there in the future, I think it would be foolish of us not to at least allow them the option, if not outright encouraging them, to look at developing residential uses along with commercial uses.
Right.
Because that's frankly what creates a vibrant core of your community. So-
More, more infill. I wanted to mention the other letter that we received, which was opposite of what we, of most of the comments. Most of the comments was, can we be, or can we be included in the new district? This one was wanting to be excluded from the new district, because he wanted to have his commercial part changed over to residential B, which is what the other half of his property was. So, he wanted to be cut out of this. But he also, from the letter, it, it was written as though he assumed that residence would be a conditional use in the new district, and I let him know that, no, it's not a conditional use, it is totally allowed. And I haven't heard back, I don't know if he is, was satisfied with that, or if he just wants to keep it as a protest and wanting to do that. And I'll get back with him once we have the, start working on the edges and see what he'd like to do at that point. So, I wanted to, to make sure that that was understood by the commission, that there are, there was one person that wanted to exclude himself from it, so.
Was there a general misunderstanding?
By the people who've come to the meeting, thinking the same things he thought that got clarified at that meeting, thinking that that would mean?
I thought there was a lot of clarification at the meeting. Couple of you were there. I felt like most of the questions was, how is this going to affect me? And I heard no one with property right there with a question about it that was not apparently satisfied that, oh, it's going to give me more flexibility in my own property. So, is that an accurate statement?
I would think so, Madam Chair. I was just, you know, I was thinking as I walked in here tonight, it was somewhat discouraging that, you know, we're having this hearing to an empty room, and then I had to remind myself that there was, actually, I think, a really good turnout at that meeting at the Silco, which was closer to, which was one of the properties that's being rezoned in this request, and was obviously closer to the folks that were affected. And I, I think that that conversation obviously must have addressed a lot of the concerns, and so, maybe it's not such a bad thing that we're sitting here by ourselves.
Well, we, we, we had 17 on the, on the sign-up sheet, but I counted more than that when, when we were there. So, I was real pleased with the turnout, and we didn't get to stop talking. You know, it was, people were really, lots of questions, lots of interest in where, the one to see where their house was and how their house was going to be affected. And I thought it was really an excellent group of, of neighbors, you know, wanting to find out what was going on in their neighborhood.
And your, and your citizen participation report, in the line where it says number of property owners contacted, you have 399 times two. What do you mean by?
Oh, okay. Contacted them twice. Once for the, the open house, and once for this meeting. They'll get a third letter for the, for the town council.
There's been about 800 contacts already.
Right.
Okay.
All to the same people, because that's what the public participation requirements are within the land use code. But, and we've had at least three or four contacts now with the same landowner, and each time, they go away happy. So, that's, yeah, I mean, with the explanation, you know, that we continue to provide for them.
Excuse me if you were going to address this, but on, since we are talking about the citizen participation, what of the incomplete application from the people on College, whatever happened with that, with the people on College Street to go mixed-use and?
Because it was brought to us as a petition, rather than an application, well, we, we gave them the application. They filled out the application, or one person filled out the application and had signatures for other people who either owned or were using particular property there. And part of our application, to be complete, is having a deed for each piece of property that a landowner wants to change. And we have asked them to provide deeds. We've gotten a deed back from one, one person, and part of that was also a, a need to discuss with them their understanding of what they were asking for as a signature on a page, because only one person was representing them. And we wanted to make sure that, that their, their understanding was complete. And one of the people who's come in and brought the deed, oh, okay, so there, there wasn't a, a total perception of, of what they had signed. They, you know, they had just quit, do you want to, do you want to have an opportunity to have multiple use of your property? Yes, okay, sign here.
And, and their properties are within the zone change, and so they're-
They're not within the zone change.
Oh, okay.
They are laying outside of this zone change up on College Street. And, and it's a, it's a bigger zone change, because it's jumping from residential A to, well, they're petitioning for mixed-use. But it's a bigger, bigger leap from residential A to a, a commercial residential than it is from commercial to another commercial, in, in our way of thinking. So, we want to make sure that they understand what they're asking for.
I trust that when staff talks about College Street, he's referring to College Avenue, right?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. I tried to outline here the differences between a commercial historic, or the historic downtown commercial and the mixed-use, just as an outline of those areas that are different. And then, Madam Chair, would you like me to read the findings into the record that are required of the commission to?
Yes, yeah.
When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council, and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall, at a minimum, make at least one of the following findings. And to clarify as much as I can, any of those findings can back up your recommendation, and your recommendation can be yea or nay. So, and, but you need at least one finding to back that up, correct? The proposed, one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance or in substantial, or not in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan, or it will adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the property surrounding uses, population forecast, rates of land consumption, or other factors. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code, or it will adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will not promote the original purposes of the land use code. The proposed amendment responds to changed conditions, such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code, or does not respond to changed conditions. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. And finally, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. And it was the staff's opinion that numbers one, two, four, and seven of those findings may be, you know, you may make a recommendation based on one of those four findings. That's just our opinion. It's not saying that you can't make a finding from either the others or make an adverse finding, so.
Or all.
Or all, you can make all four, yes. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Would you venture a guesstimate as to how many person weeks of work went into this? On the part of Town of Silver City employees?
Right.
Because as you well know, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been hounding, hounding the employees of the Town of Silver City for some time to get on with this. And this is kind of neat that this is here now.
Considering that this was one of the first projects that I was assigned over a year ago, and I spent probably full-time at least a week or two just familiarizing myself with this area of town and the maps and walking up and down the streets. And that was just to get started. And then when we finally said, okay, it's time to really dig in, I'd say at least between the staff, at lea, oh, gosh, eight to ten man weeks, person weeks.
But dedicated time.
Dedicated time. It wasn't all at once.
True.
But, you know, over the period, at least that. What would you think, Jamie? Because Jamie was a big part of this as well. Peter?
I would say five man weeks and three woman weeks.
Person weeks.
Or maybe it was the other way around, I forget.
How did you address the signage as far as notification? How many signs did you put up?
We didn't post signs.
You didn't post any signs?
No, we did just the letters, because there were so, we were, to have met the code, we would have had to put a sign at every piece of property. And we couldn't, you know, we couldn't do that.
Did the newspaper, are the newspapers show up to the meetings and cover? And?
No. We tried to get on task for the morning show, and that was the same time the morning show was off the air. So that was our effort. But the, we did have flyers up for the public meeting, the gathering, public notification in the papers and the letters.
So pretty much everyone who showed up for the meeting were people within the districts as being affected?
Right.
With maybe one or two exceptions, but?
Right. Or landowners on, just on the outside, you know, within three, because it's a three-hundred-foot radius from the outside of that area that we were doing. So it included all the people within it and then in the three-hundred-foot outside of it.
Any other questions? Anybody else from staff wants to add? Any questions for staff?
I did kind of have one. I know that there's a lot to be done. There are other mixed-use zones or areas in town that we're looking at for maybe mixed-use zoning. I mean, I threw out the Pope Street thing. I'd like to see if there's cleaning up the edges of this. Is there any feeling about what the next step is? Where, do we move on to another big chunk and then come back and work on all the boundary things after we've done all the big chunks? How would that?
Our thoughts have been the next big chunk is going to be the mixed use on the other side of Hudson, because that was part of what the purpose of the mixed use was.
The binic corner.
That transitional area. And simultaneously, we can work on the edges here. The big piece takes a lot longer than each little piece, even though it might seem that those little pieces take a lot of your time.
Well, I mean, I deserve to take a lot of your time, which is to your credit. You're so good at making sure you contact everyone and find out what all their concerns are, but I'm amazed at how the individual ones take a lot of time.
Pardon?
The individual requests take a lot of time.
They do, but they don't require the numbers of letter stuffing, you know, because you have a smaller area to sit.
Yeah, in responding, responding to councillor, I mean, Commissioner Sibel, what we're doing is we're looking at areas where there've been lots of requests for zone changes. And so that's kind of the impetus. And we'd like to take care of those areas first. And so the historic downtown area is certainly one of those, but also the area behind food basket, you know, that's own commercial. There's been a number of requests, again, dealing with this issue of financing for residential properties, et cetera. So we want to focus on those areas where there've been a lot of requests. We'll work on the edges and adjusting them. And then we'll work on, you know, the larger scheme. There are four commercial categories. The commercial along the highway, which would become highway commercial, a light commercial, which might be hospital and offices and, you know, things like that, the historic downtown district, and the mixed-use districts, which are truly transitional areas. But we're responding to petitions and needs first.
I was also gonna ask, as far as the boundary cleanup, how does staff foresee that process working? I mean, is it going to be property owner initiated? Is the town gonna initiate it? Is it gonna be some sort of cooperative thing?
Commissioner Sibel, you're addressing the edges?
Yes.
I think that we'll respond to requests. We already know, you know, some. And I think that as those issues come up and neighbors see that, oh, you know, this is being changed here, I'd like to be part of that. But I think that this was our response to a large-scale problem. And at the editing of the edges, we will allow the property owners to take the lead in requesting it. We'll certainly ask them to perhaps have you consider working with your neighbor. We could do a larger adjustment here. So I think there'd be that cooperation. But I think the initiative, or at least the initial kind of interest will come from the property owners.
And to add to that, some of that initial interest is already there, and we've started working with them. And, you know, here's the application, talk with your neighbors, this is what the process is, we'd love to work with you, we'll get you the names of the people that live around you if you need that. All of those things, there's been several property owners that have already come in. One of them from the open house that we had, and he was very much in favor of getting his property fully into this district, but only half of it is part of the commercial area.
Will we be charging those property owners fees?
The fee is waived for the time being.
So folks should come see you?
I guess.
Yes, yes, sure, definitely.
I do have one concern, and because this is just the first step in applying our new zoning, I just have to know how the rest of the commission feels. And if everybody is in agreement, I'm willing to drop it at this first zoning or large zoning change. But I don't know that I've ever been really sold on this zoning within the blocks. And, you know, I'm familiar with Peter's argument in this, and I know that, you know, it goes way back to the nineteen sixties, as he said, but I just don't, you know, I know that this would be, you know, really hard to change because all of the existing zoning goes along in the middle of the blocks. And, you know, to change that would be a lot more effort, I'm sure. But I just think it, you know, I understand the argument that they feel that the transition or, let me see what it says, how you put it here, is considered less disruptive to the fabric of a neighborhood. But it just seems odd to have a property adjacent to, that is zoned differently than another one adjacent to it. It seems like having the buffer of a street in between the two zonings would make more sense. And I don't know that I've ever truly been sold on that. I mean, I don't know that I felt strongly enough to, you know, vote against it if everybody else, as I said, is in agreement. But to me, it seems like people are more likely to have multiple properties within the same block rather than across the street. I mean, that's not always the case, but, and then, and then just in my experience, everybody's like, how come my neighbor right there gets to do it? And they're always seeing what their neighbor just next door is doing. And it just, it seems odd that it's been that way. And I know that this is just the beginning, and if we're gonna start doing it this way, that's probably how we're gonna do all of ours, because that's how the current zoning is. But I'm just curious how everybody else feels on that, because if there's ever a change to, a time to change that trend, you know, it probably would be with this first one. And so I'm just curious how the rest of the commission feels about that. Do you feel that that is a good, a good way to, that it is less disrupted within the same block to have the change of zoning, or having that, that street would create a better buffer?
Just want to respond first to the thing.
This initiative is not opposed to using the street as the zone line. This initiative is to take that part that is currently zoned commercial and fix that and take care of that problem. There are probably more than a hundred properties that fall under that issue of, well, they own, you know, past the midsection of the block. We're very open to making changes that accommodate the interests of the property owners, the interests of the neighbors as we go along. But if we try to resolve that issue in every single property now, I don't think we would be able to accomplish this large zone change. So we want to address that concern that you have, but we want to do it in the editing stage along the edges. And we are not starting from a position of opposition to using the street line as the zone edge as opposed to the middle of the block. So I just wanted, as you go, I'll think about that. I want you to make that clear, that we are not insisting that the zone is used in the middle of the block. This is just trying to deal with the large-scale issue, and then we'll edit it as we go along based on individual requests.
And I understand that you mentioned it earlier, and as part of that, cleaning up the edges, and it does make sense if somebody owns other properties, but I just, you know, most of the new zoning is gonna be applied in this manner, in that we're gonna go along probably where the existing zoning is. And I, you know, I think, I don't know when the best time is to address whether or not that truly is the best place to separate the zones. I, you know, maybe this isn't the appropriate time, but I would think, you know, that this is kind of setting a trend in how we're gonna go about doing this, whether or not we agree with where that zoning is. It never, to me, it just never made sense that it was that way, but.
Actually, yeah, I agree with you.
And it would seem like if we did make the streets as a zone line, then you wouldn't have to deal with a whole lot of these individual cases. So you would save a whole lot of, you know, so dealing with the individual cases does not really change it to the street line as a general rule. It's just saying that you're willing to, you know, change those individuals.
Right, I just think as a planning practice overall, in our future, you know, requests, if there's a large area, just deciding that upfront, that we think that it might be better planning to have that buffer of the street, you know, maybe this would be the time to make that statement if everybody agreed. I don't know, you know, I, I feel bad because I, you know, now that I'm looking at it, I'm like, I wonder how other towns do it, you know? I wonder, is this, is this something everybody does? And I just don't know about it, because I know even, just in my experience, it never made sense to me that it was in the middle of the blocks and your neighbor is zoned different than you are, you know, on the other side of the fence. And it does, it does seem like it's more disruptive to have a totally different zone behind you, especially if it's more intrusive than across the street, you know?
I disagree with that tremendously, actually, having lived with a number of bad neighbors. And, you know, I think just the same as a bad neighbor with barking dogs or, you know, noisiness. In my experience, the way you deal with noise or nuisance is you build a wall. And to my mind, the zoning is a big blunt hammer that's meant to sort of dictate with broad strokes the character of certain parts of town. And the basic unit of any community is the streets. And so it may be simple and clean when you're looking at a map to run a zone boundary down the middle of a street. But so far as the experience of the neighborhood or the street is for the people that live there and work there and use that street, that's not clean and easy for that. What you see is both sides of the street, you know, you want it to be a commercial street, you want it to be a residential street. And sure, there's going to be non-conforming uses, or there's gonna be variations in that. And I hope that through various mechanisms, we can accommodate that. But, you know, if you've got a noisy neighbor, you're gonna let him build a wall. And if people are building, you know, big six-foot, eight-foot walls, I would rather have them build those walls in the backyard rather than out on the sidewalk where we all have to live with them and deal with them, as opposed to in the backyard where it's only something that you and your neighbor have to deal with. That would be my feeling about that. And I know there's all the individual tailoring, and there's times where it gets really ridiculous and doesn't make sense, and we have to deal with those. But to me, in terms of what we're going for, generally speaking, drawing lines down the middle of blocks achieves the purposes that we're trying to achieve with zoning.
I would agree with Nick for two other reasons. First of all, no matter what you put in line, there's only gonna be somebody that's gonna line. So no matter what, you have the two sides being different. But to me, the feel of a street is what the feel you get from the block, from being on that block. You feel like, okay, I'm on a commercial block, I'm downtown, I'm on a commercial block. You go around the corner, I'm on a residential street, because on the other side it is. And they tend to be both sides of the street kind of matching each other. So just, just the feel of it and the use of it seems to be more of a match with going down the middle.
And you feel it's more important to have the conformity on the street itself rather than?
If the street's going the other way now, you'll go halfway down the block and be one thing and halfway down the other.
But you talked about, like, the experience when you talked downtown about a block of Bullard Street. When you say a block of Bullard Street, you're talking about the left side and the right side of the street. I mean, you could take the block, for instance, as the Gila Theater and the workshops of Carreras Buildings. I mean, you're talking about the buildings that are the theater and those commercial and the buildings that are commercial on the other side of the street, not the block that has the Gila Theater in it that on one side is really active and has all these storefronts. And on the backside is basically an alley that has nothing that comes onto it except some loading doors. That's, you have to think about, not the blocks, the way they look on the map, but the blocks, the way they actually function, I think.
I have two thoughts to share, maybe three. If you look at the zone change map, most of the lines go down rear property lines, not in the middle of a block, not cutting across the middle of a block. Number two, visually, and as an experience, I feel that the sense of community, the sense of place is achieved by what you're driving through or riding your bicycle through or what you're walking through, not what's happening across rear fences. And so I support the idea of a lot of these linear lines running down backyards. And I can build a wall. And then number three, as much energy and time as it took us to get to where we are today, I would probably pull my hair out with the idea of thinking, and I ain't got that much to put out, of thinking about starting over again to get to where we are right now.
And I did take that into consideration, and I honestly don't feel strongly enough about it that, you know, from here on out, I, you know, as long as everybody else is, you know, in agreement, then I'm not gonna make it an issue with any other zone change. I was just, I guess it's more concerning in the residential areas to me, you know? I'm not thinking of the commercial streets, you know? But I understand where you're coming from too, and I don't feel that strongly about it. It just, it always seemed odd to me to have, you know, your neighbor behind you be zoned differently. But I guess it does make sense in some ways. So I appreciate it. I just wanted to know how everybody else felt on that.
When I first started dealing with this notion, I was totally in agreement with you. This doesn't make sense. Why would we put a zone line in somebody's backyard? And then I found out the first one I was doing, it was also cutting people's property in half. The more I look at it, the more I look at places like this, where the zone change is actually along the street, but then it's here too, I wonder, how did this happen? What made these people here be high residential and these be the mid-residential, residential B versus residential A? And does that change anything along the street? I can't tell. I wonder what would happen though if this were a commercial line here rather than a residential line? Because this, you know, you could have, here's the school. What are you going to be selling across the street from the school? Whatever would be allowed, I guess, because that would be, that would be allowed in the zone. And that's when I, when I started walking these streets, you know, trying to understand the neighborhood, that's when I realized that, yeah, it is the streetscape, not the backyards that really make the difference in your feel of your neighborhood. I don't, I don't know anybody behind me in town, but I know the people that are neighbors along my block. And we're the ones that have that sense of place of our own. And I'm sure that the people on the street behind us have that other, have their own sense. And that's when I started losing my conviction to argue. And I did.
I'm convinced you all make a good point. It does, it's on paper, I think Nick has a good point, that on paper it just looks weird. Why not just do the whole block and, you know, not have, but that does make sense. And I, you know, I know, I trust Nick's opinion. He was walking everywhere and, you know, I know that he, I will drop it. And I wanted to get it out of my system at this first meeting too and not question it later on. And, you know, I'm convinced to move forward.
The properties that are cut in half are, you know, and we had some of those already. Those are the ones that I pulled my hair out about. So if they came in for a permit to do something on this side of their property and they're, you know, but, you know, that's where I think, oh my gosh, this is really going to get...
And there are a number of those. And I guess those are sticking out in my head too, you know. Well, what do I do here? I'm allowed to do this here and not here and how did it ever get zoned? You know, that didn't make sense, but...
And those would be the ones that I would really encourage to say, what zone do you want to be? Let's, you're on the edge. Let's figure out where you should be. Is that what you mean by fixing edges?
Yeah, I think that, not here. I think that we do want to try and offer as much flexibility as we can to the property owners. We want to also take into consideration the concerns of the neighborhood. But there are not, you know, single answers to these questions. And the edges are the trickiest part. And so we really do want to offer an opportunity for people to come in and adjust those. And as Jim mentioned, we're not going to be charging fees for that. We do want to get this right. We do want to take the public input. We just want to take this first bite and kind of get the map adjusted at a much larger scale than the way we've been doing it up till now. And we'll edit.
Like, say you get a set of five, 10 people on the edges of here that want to do an adjustment. It can all be done as one set? Or does it have to be done individually?
You know, if... There's a man here who's already talked to Jim about, gee, I think I'd like to make some adjustments. And I think my neighbors would be interested too. So this is a logical area where you can, you know, maybe start to build, you know, a single interest into a larger application. But I'm not sure that I would do one here and then one here and then one there as a single unit. We would, you know, this person here, we might just bring in individually. This person here is speaking with his neighbors, we bring in collectively. And I think that's how we would proceed.
Okay. And the process allows you, would allow you to do three or four people walking right in row together at one time instead of...
Yeah, we've done that in the past over here in, well, I guess over here in the commercial, probably the stuff right there. There was a request to make a residential B and the whole block going in on the request. So that was, that was a few years ago. On the other hand, sometimes there are just, you know, I don't see a good example here, but maybe that's just a single request there. So we certainly see the benefits of having people work with their neighbors, working with us to, you know, build something that's logical. And, you know, as far as Councilor Commissioner Cybill said, I mean, yes, we're interested in the area around Oak Street and finding compatible use. We're fighting the rest of Cottrell Street. I see, you know, there are lots of commercial uses there and residentially so. We see that it doesn't fit. So we certainly want to work with those landowners there and find the most suitable solution. You know, I think that this has been a long time coming in terms of getting all the different land use categories in place. And now we're ready to start working on that and responding to people's concerns and needs.
Well, I appreciate that you brought the residential, I mean, the commercial area forward in one bite first. I think that was wise and it's a nice transition into the whole rezoning of that area. So I think that was a good way to approach it.
And I think that in future proposals from us, you know, I don't know what other, you know, what neighbors are going to think. But like, when we have looked at this area for a potential mixed use, it's really harder to define that because there's pockets totally of residential and pockets that are kind of residential that are moving really fast to commercial and it might even be better to leave them as commercial. And it's just, I think that it's going to be harder to describe other areas of town. This one was easy because we kept it within the historic district and it was already all commercial. So good fortune to have.
Any other questions, our customers? Anything else from staff? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, in the matter of project number ZC 12-09, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Town Council that we approve the request by the Town of Silver City for a map amendment zone change for numerous tracts of land in and adjacent to the Silver City, North Edition, Black's Edition, and Chihuahua Hill Historic Districts. With this recommendation, be based on the following findings. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the Town's Comprehensive Plan. Number two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the Town's Comprehensive Plan. Number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code. And number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. And finally, that there be no recommended conditions.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
A point of, I don't know, clarification. I understood you say ZC 12-09?
12-05.
Okay.
ZC 12-05.
Okay. Any discussion before we vote?
I just, I wanted to ask, I know there's someone in the audience and he came in too late to be sworn in, but he didn't want to say anything, right?
Okay, any thoughts? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us say aye? All right, the motion passes. And unless somebody knows about something I don't know, I don't see that we have any new business or a community forum this evening. So do we have any reports from staff? But I guess before that, I would like to say really quick, I just, I appreciate the amount of time you guys put into this, not just the amount of time you all put into this, but the expertise that you have. It's always amazing to me how well you're able to answer questions and really clarify things for us. So I really, really want to thank the staff. So, and did you all have any reports?
Basically, the only report I had was thanking you for your assistance in recruiting of potential new members and a new member on the commission. And I want to thank Ms. Furby for joining us and looking forward to meeting two of the new applicants that we have coming forward soon.
Anything else? Okay, anybody have reports from the commission? If no, okay. Yes.
Well, this is my last meeting. My term of office actually ends in July, but I'm going to be in Wisconsin in July. So I won't be at that meeting if we have one. I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission for two years now and I worked 18 months with Peter Russell and others on the Land Use Code Revision Task Force. So I've been at working at this three and a half plus years. Wow. Doesn't seem that long. It went by quick and it went by happily. I feel good about the opportunity to serve the community. I feel good about the change in leadership we have and how that's going to go forward. I'm really pleased with our chair and vice chair we're going to have from this point forward. I'm pleased we have a new commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I sincerely encourage the residents of the Town of Silver City to get involved. You get out of something what you're willing to put into it. And I feel this experience has made me a better person. So goodbye.
Come up here first.
Okay. We have an appreciation award plaque and I'll just read it. It's presented to George Zoney, Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chair. We extend this token of appreciation with our heartfelt gratitude for your outstanding and dedicated service so enthusiastically given. And I want to just really quickly add that George was, like I said last month for Alice, was one of the reasons that I joined because I have been so impressed with the questions you ask, that your understanding of things, when you make a statement, how clear you are and how you cover every little base. And it was one of the things that actually made me want to be on the commission. So I want to thank you. And I have really enjoyed working with you and have so much respect for you. And I also want to make the point that I know that even though you're not going to be on the commission anymore, you're still going to be doing a lot of really neat things for the community. So, there you go.
Thanks so much, George, for all of your service. It has truly been a pleasure working with you. And you were definitely an asset to this commission in many ways and especially to the task force. I saw the, I, that was tough. And you were very dedicated, you kept your cool. And that says a lot under those circumstances. It was a very stressful, I don't know. Maybe it was stressful, it seemed like. And for you to take that on, you know, that says a lot. And we, I really appreciate it and I'm sure the staff does and the town does. And I know that your new endeavor is close to your heart. And that's what makes me feel a little bit better about you moving on. And I just hope that they appreciate you as much as we have it. Thanks so much.
I have a feeling that George and I may not agree a lot politically if we were to sit down and talk about things. But I have to say during the months I've had the honor of serving with George on this commission, he's made me think a whole lot about a lot of the issues that have come up for discussion here and made me look at different perspectives and points of view and really reframed things on several occasions in ways that made me see something I hadn't seen before. And that's greatly appreciated, not only to have that alternate perspective, but to be able to communicate that and persuade folks. And so I really miss having your voice and your perspective on the commission and look forward to seeing the great things you all are going to get up to.
I'm excited about what's coming up.
And do we have any community input? This is the time for community input. If you're interested in making any kind of statement, this is the community...
I do have some questions about some of the definitions of the zoning, some things like that. I have some property, a couple of properties in town that one specifically has to do with what you've been talking about.
Could you actually come up to the mic? The reason is we are on television and that's the only way that the audience out there will be able to hear you. And then if you give me your name and go ahead.
Well, my thought is if I could just talk to these gentlemen and get some specific details on some of the things that, you know, I don't have any, so that I know the proper definitions of zoning and how that might apply to the property that I have.
Okay, that's, they are the experts. So, yeah, that definitely, if you can, one of you will help them afterwards, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
In the second floor of the Bank of America Building.
Okay. And anything else at all?
I move that we adjourn.
A second? Okay, you adjourn, thank you.